Good evening. A little bit more. Good evening, I'd like to call this meeting to order. This is the Ashkosh Area School District Board of Education regular meeting for Wednesday, April 25th, 2018. Has this meeting been properly noticed?
Yes, it has.
Would you please call the roll?
Karlin?
Here.
Morrison?
Here.
Evans?
Here.
Aaroner?
Here.
Thurza?
Here.
Olstead?
Here.
Teshan?
Here.
Thank you very much. We have two students this evening from Perry Tippler Middle School who are leading us in the Pledge of Allegiance, Olivia Bouse and Gabriela Hailing.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
It's nice to see so many people, excuse me, it's nice to see so many people in attendance. I know this is an exciting place to be and so we're thrilled to have you all. Our school district is very fortunate to have a number of exchange programs with various countries and other parts of the world. Excuse me, and this is the annual meeting where we welcome the Thailand Sunrise Exchange Program. Is there someone who wanted to speak to that group?
Yeah, yeah, I have P too.
Okay.
Hi, my name's Jeff Schenker.
Hi, Amy.
He's busy.
We put this PowerPoint together because our guests from Thailand actually had wanted to share some photos and things with everyone, so we put this together. Basically, it's the third year that the Academy for Level One over at Ashkosh West has hosted students from Thailand. We've been very fortunate this year, not only in the number of students who got into the program, we've expanded, long story short. We're up to eighty-three students this semester, and because of their interest, we took on more students than we've ever had before. So we're hosting ten students this year versus five, as we've done in the past, and we have two teachers from Thailand with us instead of one. So it's really pretty exciting all the way around. They got in on Saturday, they're here for about two and a half weeks approximately. April 22nd through May the 9th is when they'll be with us, and we'll do a number of events and things across the district, including having the pleasure, of course, of being here with everyone this evening. With that, I would like to bring in my Thailand guests, if I can find them, and they have a number of things planned for you.
Can someone take it out?
Okay. So if, and if Matt, you can go to the other YouTube. They want to perform two dances for you this evening. One of them is a traditional Thai dance. They just celebrated their New Year, so the Thai New Year basically is a weekend event where they do nothing but have fun with water. And if you ever have a chance to Google search Thailand New Year, there's literally like water guns and hoses in the streets, and they have a blast. So the students that are here with us, as those of you that have been with us before, they do not come from the same school, they come from literally all across the country. They've never met one another until a weekend gathering where they essentially bring everyone in, and they get familiar with one another, and basically they have to apply for this program. Again, if I haven't mentioned, it's the twelfth year that DPI has done this with Thailand, and the exchange program was really designed initially as a way of saying thank you to the country of Thailand for their role in working with the monks who had then refugees basically in a number of the camps in Thailand during the Vietnam War. So with that, I'd like to introduce our Thai guests. Cafe?
Hi.
Mrs. Sirwan and Mr. Titinan. Introduce yourselves as you come in, that would be great.
So hello, everyone, I'm Mara.
Sawadee ka, I'm Fern.
Hello, everyone, I'm Boom, and I came from the central region of Thailand.
Hello, everyone, I'm James, and I came from the northeast of Thailand.
Hi, everyone, my name is Chow.
Hey, everyone, I'm George, and I came from the southern region of Thailand.
Hello, everyone, I'm Win, I came from the center of Thailand.
Good evening, everyone, I'm Carrie San, from the northern part of Thailand.
Hi, everyone, my name is Ben, I'm from Phuket, Thailand.
The second one, the music. The song is working, so if you can find the one we use.
The tunes? Well, I thought that was the music.
Me too.
Her ringtone is.
Okay, so good evening, guys. So to not waste our time, we're gonna talk about Thailand first. So, do you know where Thailand is? Okay, so it's a country in the southeast region of Asia, and the size of our country is equivalent to around one or two states of Europe, and our population roughly is around seventy million.
And the country, as all of the host family, I think we know that we live in a place that has like really different weather than you guys do. People would be piling their clothes on because they feel really cold right here, and you guys are like, "It's so warm right now." Yeah, but to be honest, I feel like we, there are so many different things, like there's more than weather, mostly where like the most easily found is food, and that we eat like very spicy food, and you guys kind of have a lot of more dairy and stuff. Yeah, so those are like the basics difference that we find here, but the thing is that we enjoy those differences. So.
Everybody else? I think. Other people? Okay, so in Thailand, we have the, let's talk about religion. Most of Thai have Buddhists for our traditional religion, and there's some Christians and...
And some other. But as we're Buddhists, we're influenced by this religion, so we have the greeting that we do this and say sawadee. So this is called the Y, in which we use to people in many levels, the king, monk, adults, or even people of our own age.
It's similar to like Shikha.
Similar to Shikha. So.
Can you demonstrate the Y? Okay, so we do like a lotus here between your chest, and we go like this and say sawadee, so it's like greeting.
Okay, so our Y, we actually have three levels. So if you put your thumb on your shin, it means that you're trying to greet the people of the same level, meaning like they're trying to greet your friends. Okay, so if you're trying to greet someone who's older than you, you put your thumb on their nose, like this, and if you're trying to pay respects to the monks, you put your thumb on your eyebrow. So that's how we Y correctly. Okay, as you can see, we have a lot of culture differences, and today we're going to present you about our cultural role, so we are kind of like exchanging our culture here.
You have excellent English. Do all students learn English from an early age?
Depends on each like children, how they, where they were raised, what school they go to, some schools have English programs, some don't. Yeah, but most of us here can speak either by influence or by schools.
Thank you.
So right now, we are very, very ready, so we are gonna... We are ready from the start.
Okay, so we're gonna move to that PowerPoint over there. Yes. Is it okay if me and Boom are gonna talk from here?
Sure, absolutely.
Okay.
Go from here.
So the first thing about our school that's different is about the school activities. So in Thailand, we have a day that's very important to us, it's the sports day, and on this day, we have like performances, we have like stands and cheerleaders, we have marching bands, we have things like that. So this is a day that we put a lot of effort in, and it's a day that we kind of enjoy sports together.
Okay, so as we're most, we're a Buddhist country, and we have Buddhism as our like official religion, most schools like have offerings and offers to monks and make marriage at like once a week. So they will have student go to school early, and they will invite monks, mostly eight to nine monks, because eight and nine are like good, the lucky numbers according to the belief. And they will have food, the monks will come and they will have their prayers, and then we'll offer them food. Yeah, so we believe that if we do this, it will give us, we're making good deeds, and we will end up in heaven. And the last ceremony is when we stand at eight o'clock, like exactly eight o'clock, and then we'll sing the natural anthem, and people will be raising the flag up to the top of the pole as we like pay respect to our country.
And next is the graduation day, so like the seniors at the last year of the high school, they actually have the graduation day on the last day of school. So what we do is actually put the crowns or the heads to make them special, because it's special day for them. And also, we have to learn about ASEAN, so we have ASEAN Youth Leader Camp, and the ASEAN is crucial, it's because Thailand is also part of ASEAN, and it's like our economic group, so we have to study what it's about and how it's important to our economy.
So Christmas Day, a lot of schools celebrates Christmas in Thailand, although we don't eat turkey like you do. We don't cook up a lot of food, mostly we just put up Christmas tree and decorate them. But most schools will have musicals, they will just sing, they will perform to celebrate Christmas as it's a very like widely celebrated occasion, and a lot of schools have Santa as well, that will give candies out to children, so it's a very like merry time of the year.
And this is an example of how we exchanged cultures well. So this is a group of teachers from Yucatan who visited a school called Ipum Chilai in June. So as you can see, they were trying to show their dances, and we also teach them how about how our dances worked also. And we also have like activities for you guys to try also, so you don't have to stand, you can just sit. Okay, so to begin with, this is a phrase, "Khaokun Krab," in Thai it means "thank you," and "Khaokun Krab" is used with males only, so you put your hands up, you bow, and you say "Khaokun Krab." Okay, so three, two, one. Khaokun Krab.
And for women and girls, we say "Khaokun Ka." So you do the Y, and then bow your head down and say "Khaokun Ka." So it's like this, "Khaokun Ka." Now let's try this at the counter three. Okay, one, two, three. Khaokun Ka.
Okay.
So just to make an understanding, "Krab" is like the polite ending word for boys or men, and "Ka" is for women and girls.
Okay, and next, we are going to show you our dancers, but just a little bit before that, we need to try to introduce you about our dancers. They're going to give you some improvisation, but it won't be us to tell you all that who's gonna be.
I think we're gonna invite the person who's the most like elaborately dressed to do that. So let's welcome Cafe.
So what we are going to perform after our presentation is called Sing Che Ya Sing. Okay. Sorry. Okay, and this is a very, very old traditional Thai dance, and we dance it to pray for God and make them, show our respect to them, and so they need a lot of training to do this, but I hope you guys like it. So after I said all about that, and we are going to perform, it started.
Thank you so very much for sharing your time and your talents with us this evening. This is a night of celebrations, and you've certainly helped us add to that special, special night and time tonight, so thank you very much.
But now, all your time, I really proud to everybody who has performed. There's one thing I tell you which I quite really worried about is performance, because we have very short time to practice, and all of us come from different parts of Thailand, and we just have very short time, just two or three days to practice, and anyway, it's great.
Now, there's a gift.
Okay, now.
A gift.
It's been so exciting for us. But anyway, during this time, I would like to say something from our heart to you all. The school board, the whole family, ladies and gentlemen, on behalf of the diversity of Thai teacher and student, I would like to express my appreciation to you all here, although we just arrived for a few days, but you now feel like we have stayed here for a long time. Everyone, my kids get to know each other one another very much, and can I say now, what's what is, I will stay at home now. Okay, and I don't have time to prepare anything else, and I don't mind with, and also my little bit can't remember either, yes. So now, I would like to talk about my... also my little bit can't remember either. Yes. So now, I would like to talk what I and feel I will let my heart go. Yes. Okay. And this time, I want to find us to be first because it's a real feeling that we feel. Right. And you see how happy we are here for a big smile. Like, and I would like to say thank you again for your support from the school board, from the host family, and especially for the coordinator to work hard for us, Mr. Chinko. And he figure out the wonderful schedule for us every day. Yes. And I think what some of you can remember, the horde, the former teacher, Vicky.
From last year.
Yes. And she told us a lot how much she happy why staying here. And I now believe everything she said. And when I know that all of us pass the exam and have a chance to visit USA and once it is the first time in my life, and I think, oh, this was awesome. Now, before last part of this, I have a small gift to present to the. Vicky, it made just a beautiful to talk to you, the school board. I'm very looking forward to welcome you. And I think we are ready to be horde your student. And my school would like to be the first school to host the student. Yes. Twelve years ago, just become only. Why can't you to this art? So I'm very looking forward to see you soon in Thailand.
Thank you.
Thank you.
It would be fair if I speak alone.
That's fair enough. From both the sweet words, she also like speak a lot about that. And she speak my hearts already. But the thing that I really would like to say is, I really feel not opportunity, but privilege to be here. So, thank you very much for the board, Mr. Chinko, Ashkosh School, Ashkosh Community, all the parents, and everyone of you, everything that combined to be the Ashkosh. I really feel it. I really feel the home away from home. Thank you very much.
Thank you so much. This is wonderful. We're very grateful for your coming and sharing with us. And we also appreciate the efforts of our West High staff and a principal who's been a strong supporter of this from the very beginning, and all of the host families. You come and you share and you help us become better people as a result. And so, we're hopeful that you will very much enjoy your stay in Ashkosh and that you will come and visit us again. Thank you so much. This is always such a special evening to have the Thailand Sunrise Group here. And it's also a special evening when we are able to celebrate our employees. Many years ago, when I applied for a position in the district, I asked the interview team, what was the strength of the district? And the person who answered the question didn't even pause for a nanosecond. But he said, it's the staff. And so, that same comment could be made today. And so, we're here tonight to be able to recognize some of our representatives of our very finest people in the district, the staff who serve our students and our families each and every day. So, with that, we'll turn it over to Mr. Or Dr., excuse me, Dr. Andrew Jones.
Thank you, Dr. Herzog. Well, before we get started, again, this is one of the most exciting nights for the Ashkosh Area School District because we get to look and honor our very own people, the best of the best. And what makes it even more special is that they were nominated by their peers. And that makes something very special. Before we get started, but very quickly, thank quite a few people, this event doesn't go without a lot of support. We'd like to, I'd like to thank the entire executive team, the Board of Education, our Employee of the Year Committee, our Ashkosh Area School District Food Service, who at early, about an hour ago, had fed us a wonderful meal, our typical administration, Jay Jones and Kevin Lockholz, for hosting the event. A very special shout out to John Omen at West High School, who made the plaques, the awards for each of the individuals, Roxanne Casperson, Shere Wertz for their administrative help, and each of the principals from the nominating schools of the employees. And lastly, our own Katie Neiman, our Communications Director. With that, please help me and recognize Lindsay Hermsen, a fifth grade teacher at Washington Elementary, as the 2018 Ashkosh Area School District Employee of the Year. Going above and beyond is quite common for Lindsay, who is constantly working to improve as an educator, expanding her skills and expertise each and every year. Lindsay works hard outside of the classroom to develop professionally. And more importantly, takes what she learns to create new experiences for her students. Most recently, Lindsay created an ongoing learning project in which her students collaborate to plan, film, and distribute a weekly news show for Washington Elementary. She also established a weekly innovation time in which students complete different engineering and technology activities that require them to think critically and creatively to problem solve, collaborate, and communicate with each other throughout the process. In addition, Lindsay looks to bring innovation into her classroom whenever possible. This year, she collaborated with another fifth grade teacher to create a unique parent-teacher conference experience in which her students use their Chromebook to record themselves reading. Then, they created videos of their reading to share with their parents during conferences. In order to accomplish these initiatives, Lindsay has high expectations of her students, as well as great classroom management skills, which allow her to maintain a positive learning environment for her students. The Washington School community is certainly lucky to have Lindsay. On behalf of the entire Ashkosh Area School District, please join me in recognizing and congratulating Lindsay, the 2018 Employee of the Year. Our next Employee of the Year is Megan Neview. Megan is an instructional support teacher at Reed Elementary School. Megan is a leader and role model within the Reed community, as well as the entire Ashkosh Area School District. When it comes to being involved, her resume is quite lengthy. She is part of Reed's leadership team, a first responder to situations within Reed, a building coach for Partners in Health, and even the creator of a new summer math program for Reed students. As an instructional support teacher, Megan truly believes that all students can succeed, and she is committed to providing students with the support they need and always doing what is best for them. While she holds students accountable for their progress and their behavior, she also sets realistic expectations and is able to develop solutions when issues arise. You will often see her sitting on the floor, working with students, and helping them tackle a problem or a lesson. And she often is willing to give up her own personal time during lunch to help students who are struggling academically, or upset, or just having a bad day. Megan is both trauma-informed and conscious discipline-trained, and the expertise that she brings to Reed has allowed the school to respond to difficult situations and create best practices that continue to improve the school environment and culture. As a leader, Megan's impact is far-reaching and a true asset to the entire Reed community. Her ability to refocus the leadership team and always attack a situation by being solution-focused is an incredible asset. In addition, Megan pushes those around her to be better leaders. She is an advocate for students, a mentor to many staff members, and a true asset to the Reed community. On behalf of the entire Ashkosh District, please join me in recognizing Megan as the 2018 Employee of the Year. Our next Employee of the Year is Deborah Hilcher, a science teacher at Carl Trager. Deborah has devoted her educational career to inspiring students and creating an environment in which students are constantly exposed to the latest advances in science and the entire spectrum of STEM. In fact, she created a STEM model that is being used by other schools in our district and has gone above and beyond to bring STEM experiences to the entire Carl Trager community. In an attempt to constantly bring new ideas and experience to her students, Deborah regularly invites experts from the University of Wisconsin-Madison to demonstrate the opportunities that await in the field of science. And she also takes students to Madison to explore a variety of disciplines, including physics, geology, and biology. Deborah knows that exposing students to university learning while they are still in middle school encourages them to set goals for what they can accomplish in the future and opens their eyes to the possibilities. When it comes to keeping students engaged in classroom learning, Deborah knows that interaction is the key. While it takes extra time in planning to create an environment where seventh graders are constantly working on a hands-on lab, it's a commitment that Deborah has made. In addition, she is constantly using interactive tools and bringing the latest technologies to her students. Deborah's ability to engage students is amazing, and her dedication to student learning is incredible. As demonstrated by her commitment to create, collaborate, and innovate, her work ethic is in a class by itself. It is rare to find a person in any occupation who is so willing to go above and beyond to inspire and encourage others. Deborah is a true asset to the Carl Trager community. Please, on behalf of the entire Ashkosh District, please help me recognizing Deborah as a 2018 Employee of the Year. Our next Employee of the Year is Justin Warrer. He's a physical education teacher at Merrill Middle School. If you ask Justin what his dream job would be, he might just tell you that he already found it. Ever since he was an Ashkosh North High School student, Justin knew he wanted to teach physical education to a diverse group of students, and of course, to someday coach his very own beloved North High School football team. While Justin's career is certainly still young, his impact has been monumental to the students and the entire school community. Justin's physical education classes are a place where students of all abilities shine. They learn discipline and teamwork through sports. They develop listening and communication skills that they are able to apply to classroom learning, and they develop lasting friendships. While working with a diverse group of students, Justin is tasked with finding unique ways to connect, often using movement and motion to communicate and teach. Without a doubt, Justin is an employee that never stops giving. He coaches sports teams year-round, including football and track at North, and basketball and wrestling at Merrill. And perhaps most importantly, he creates lasting bonds with students and shows them the importance of perseverance, whether it be on the court or field, in the classroom, or in life. Justin is one of those teachers whose primary focus isn't numbers on a scoreboard or grades on a test. His focus is on teaching and developing students of character. On behalf of the entire Ashkosh District, please help me recognize Justin as a 2018 Employee of the Year. Our next Employee of the Year is Marcy Gunlock. Marcy is the principal at Smith Elementary. Described as a master of relationship-building, Marcy Gunlock understands that education is a team effort, and she is committed to developing relationships with staff, students, and entire families in order to ensure that her school community continues to succeed. When it comes to her students, she knows each by name and can tell you something about them, whether it be hobbies, interests, background, or academic strengths or challenges. When it comes to her families, her relationships are authentic and allow for open communication and collaboration. And when it comes to herself, Marcy truly cares for and about their well-being, whether it be including them in shared decision-making, mentoring them, or making their day brighter with a personal note of appreciation and encouragement and delivering their favorite treat on their birthday. Under Marcy's leadership, Smith has greatly improved its assessment scores and continues to achieve high academic excellence. Her hands-on approach allows her to have deep, constructive conversations with staff around teaching and learning. In addition, Marcy has developed a culture of using data to identify students in need of support and to put support plans, both academic and behavior, into place before a situation becomes disruptive. By regularly reviewing data, the school is able to identify issues and develop best practices that students, all students, as well as other staff, are able to maintain a positive learning environment. Marcy's incredible impact is perhaps most evident in the school's culture and climate, which has been transformed under her leadership. Marcy goes above and beyond to make Smith Elementary School a place where students and teachers want to be, which is evident in the trust and confidence that the entire school community has in her. Marcy is truly an example of a principal who is dedicated to the community, students, staff, as well as her profession. Her work ethic is unmatched as she is tireless in her efforts to continually improve the Smith community. On behalf of the entire Ashkosh District, please help me recognize Marcy Gunlock as Administrator of the Year. We also have a category for First Year Teacher of the Year, our Employee of the Year, and that is Samantha Koochie. Samantha is a math teacher at Ashkosh North High School. Samantha is described as a teacher that the future of education needs. Her passion for mathematics is contagious, as her energy and enthusiasm and her work ethic is unparalleled. Samantha is excited about teaching math concepts, whether working with students in an advanced mathematics class, or working with students in need of intervention in the math lab. When it comes to teaching, she is known for her ability to meet students where they are and help them create connections to a subject that many find difficult and even frustrating. Samantha is able to effortlessly evaluate a student's needs and then pull out a viable remedy from her bag of tricks. She uses data points and assessment in her planning to utilize her students' knowledge and communicates concepts in such a way that no one feels inadequate regardless of their ability or comfort level. Though it seems almost impossible, Samantha makes math fun for everyone. Her love of learning and commitment to student success is evident, as students regularly flock to her for additional help and support and encouragement. As a first-year educator, Samantha has already found a way to reach and support students of all abilities, and the Ashkosh North community is certainly lucky to have her. On behalf of the entire Ashkosh District, please help me recognize our First Year Teacher of the Year, Samantha Koochie. Our next category is the Support Staff Employees of the Year. Our first one is James Pollack. James is a custodian at Jefferson Elementary School. Jim has been with our district since 1994. Through his connection to Jefferson began when he was a student himself, having attended kindergarten at the school before the new building was built. As an employee, Jim has a strong work ethic, is dedicated to the school, and takes pride in showing up every day. To say that he is a perfectionist would be almost an understatement. Jefferson Elementary is known in the district for being a beautiful school and has always kept clean, tidy, and very well-maintained. This is due to the expertise of Jim and his skills with knowing the school inside and out. It's no surprise that he is also viewed as a valuable resource throughout the entire community and is often asked to train new custodial staff. Jim is mindful of energy efficiency, helps to create a safe learning environment, and he offers valuable ideas to be resourceful, including independently implementing a recycling program at Jefferson. Jim is not only dedicated to Jefferson during his contracted time, but will volunteer to help out where needed and often gives of his time and expertise to Jefferson outside of the workday. In addition, Jim is so much more than an employee. He is an instrumental part of the Jefferson School community and is a positive role model and mentor for students. He not only loves the school, but cares deeply for the safety and well-being of students, staff, and families. He enjoys participating in the school community and will often demonstrate this by being part of school. part of school activities, such as Crazy Hair Day, as well as knowing every student at Jefferson, spending lunch hour in the cafeteria, and helping students become independent. Jim is truly an asset to the Jefferson community and our entire district. On behalf of the entire Oshkosh district, please help me recognize Jim Pollak. Also in our Support Staff Employee of the Year category is Ruth Cottrell. Ruth is a cross-categorical paraprofessional at Roosevelt Elementary. Ambitious, hardworking, compassionate, and generous, Ruth is one of the most dedicated staff members at Roosevelt Elementary School. Her impact is far-reaching, and she is always focused on finding ways to improve the school environment and help students. This past year, she took it upon herself to redesign the CDB Reading Library, making it easier for all that use it. Additionally, she not only organized the games and supplies for recess, but she created wristbands for the team sports, rules for all the games, and even donated additional supplies, not because she was asked to do so, but because she saw a need and wanted to improve the Roosevelt experience. With a similar focus, Roosevelt School Store has had a complete makeover thanks to Ruth's efforts and, once again, her generosity. This year, the students had the opportunity to buy holiday gifts from the school store, and Ruth spent numerous days and hours after school volunteering her time to create a memorable holiday shopping experience for the students. In fact, most of the gifts were donated by Ruth. In addition to her generosity and compassion, Ruth strives to always make a positive impact in the Roosevelt community. Her ability to communicate with both students and staff in such a professional, patient, and caring way is inspiring to many. She is firm, yet fair, and creates positive relationships throughout the school community, offering all students, staff, and parents understanding, acceptance, and grace. Ruth has proven herself to be an outstanding leader and has come to be a true treasure at Roosevelt. On behalf of the entire Oshkosh School District, please help me recognizing Ruth Cottrell as Employee of the Year. These eight individuals' pictures will go up in the boardroom here, onto my right in the very near future. They will remain there for the entire year to be recognized. And while we are recognizing these eight individuals, and again, the comments that I read were from their peers, not from me. I also would be remiss to say, we have so many outstanding educators and paraprofessionals and other support people in our district, that while these only eight are being named, we have an outstanding district for all of them. So, again, on behalf of the entire district, thank you, and we're very proud of each of you.
Thank you, Dr. Jones, and thank you to our honorees tonight and their family members who have supported them.
Thank you.
All right, moving on, then, we have Boarded Administrative Reports, starting with the Board President's Report. I just have a couple of things I wanted to mention tonight. First of all, today is Administrative Professional Day in our country, and want to give a shout-out to all of those administrative professionals throughout our system and the many positive things they do each and every day to make a positive impact on student learning. And especially to signal out Teresa Collins and Sheri Wertz, who do so much work behind the scenes as well as in front of the scenes for this board, to make sure that we function efficiently. So, thanks to Teresa and Sheri for all you do for us. We really appreciate you.
Yep.
The other thing I wanted to mention was I spent some time in Madison today. Kay Weber has invited me to attend Skills USA for at least four years in a row, and I've not been able to get there because of scheduling, but I made it today, and I'm so glad I did, to see all those red blazers that were donated to the Merrill Middle School for those students to look so sharp among that sea of red blazers. I deliberately did not wear my own red blazer because I didn't want to be asked to compete with anything that the students were doing. But Kay Weber, excuse me, Dan Garten, Dave Tucher, all from Merrill Middle, and Gary Hammond from North are probably still in Madison for the awards part of that program. Just a phenomenal program to support students being college, career, community, and citizenship-ready. So, great job to those teachers and to those students. They're learning soft skills like how to shake hands, how to look at people directly in the eye when they talk to them, put resumes together. It was just a very exciting day. Woodworking was going on, welding was going on, small engine demonstrations with anything from motorcycles, then graduating to cars, and then to diesel trucks. Little robots that had to maneuver various obstacles and a real teamwork involved with that, because one person gave the directions while the other looked on a screen and only could see what the robot looked like, not where the obstacles were. So, it was a good exercise in directions, and even keeping your left separate from your right was very important today down there. So, it was a great day. So, kudos to those teachers and those students representing us today at Skills USA. I'm sure they'll have some things for the Superintendent's Good News Report last week or next week, excuse me, next board meeting. So, on to the Superintendent's Report. Tonight, we have Dr. David Gunlock, Deputy Superintendent, filling in for Superintendent Stan Mack.
Thank you. First off is the Superintendent's Good News Report. Reed Elementary School, families and staff enjoyed a family night on April 6, which included catching their dinner as Uncle Pancake flipped pancakes through the air. They also engaged in the One Book One School Program, reading The Adventures of a South Pole Pig, and raffled off Two Stuffed Pigs, Keeping with the Evening Theme of Pigs. That's interesting. From March 6 through March 8, nearly 750 Oshkosh-area eighth-grade students had the opportunity to have a hands-on job shadow experience in a career area of interest. Thanks to the partnership of the Oshkosh Chamber and 18 area employers, students could explore careers in manufacturing, IT, healthcare, transportation, engineering, construction, and construction to help them determine which career path to pursue after graduation. Pictured here are Tipler and Alf students who participated in the Career Job Shadow Day at the Appleton Airport and the Winnebago County Sheriff's Department. Thanks again to the Oshkosh Chamber for finding sites for all the students so they could ask questions and learn about career opportunities. Oshkosh's Wave Robotics Team recently won regionals in lacrosse and will travel to Detroit, Michigan for the World Championship Competition from, I believe they're there now, from April 25 through April 28. The team received a control award for their programming techniques and, over a 10-year period, has won every first technical award. Congratulations and good luck in Detroit. Very impressive group indeed. Congratulations to Quincy Anderson, Oshkosh North High School senior, who recently signed this National Letter of Interest to play basketball at Minnesota State Mankato. We wish you all the best, Quincy. Congratulations to the Oshkosh West High School students who are pictured here for their amazing artwork and the awards they received at the Art and Garden Show held at the Hilton Garden Inn. A special thanks to all who sponsored the event.
Wow.
And we get the benefit of seeing a lot of their artwork around Central Office, which is fantastic. Congratulations to Brendan Coxleen, a youth apprenticeship student at Aurora Medical Center, who received the Lilly Award. This award is given to a caregiver at Aurora who demonstrates excellence through extraordinary service, clinical expertise, compassionate care, or is considered an outstanding role model to their peers. Congratulations, Brendan.
That's awesome.
Congratulations to the Oshkosh West High School Wind Ensemble and Varsity Band students who received first-division ratings, which is the highest rating possible at the WSMA Large Group Contest at Carroll College on April 13. Take a moment to check out their performances by clicking on the link provided in the slide, which will be posted on the Facebook page. The students worked very hard to achieve this rating and should be very proud, because we are certainly proud of them. Since the YMCA is a partner at Learning or PAL with Shapiro Stem Academy, students and families had the great opportunity to use the YMCA facility free of cost on the evening of April 7. Swimming seemed to be the big hit for many, but others enjoyed soccer, basketball, rock-climbing, football, and the bounce house. The Oshkosh Chamber's PAL program is designed to connect the resources and talents of local businesses and organizations with the needs and goals of schools. It benefits both students and businesses by enhancing continual improvement of the education of the students. Thanks to the generosity of many who contributed to the GoFundMe page set up by Merrill Middle School's Fayette Specialist, Ms. Lauren Kraus, Merrill students in need of shoes and who qualify after completing a questionnaire will have access to them. There were 81 pair of tennis shoes received from Amazon at a total cost of $2,200. The students and staff expressed their sincere gratitude to everyone who donated. On April 18, the staff of the Oshkosh West Index Newspaper received Blue Ribbon Honors as the best large-school newspaper for the Northeast Wisconsin Scholastic Press Association. Pictured here are several of the newspaper staff who are also listed here for receiving individual awards. Congratulations to all. About 136 students and their families attended the E. Cook Spring Showcase on April 17, where students displayed hundreds of art pieces, and families learned about positive behavior techniques and math and literacy information. There was a photo booth for pictures, and everyone had the chance to win raffle prizes and enjoy ice cream sundaes. Washington Elementary School's first graders were busy this past month, picking a character from a book they liked, then researching that character, creating a poster about the character, and finally, dressing up as that character and sharing their story with other students in the building. What fun.
Oh, my God.
Oaklawn Elementary School students had the opportunity to showcase their artwork at the Oshkosh Public Library during Art Fest. Oaklawn students received a visit from an Oaklawn past student and now Oshkosh North High senior, Tyrese Halliburton, who worked with the students to create tints, hues, and shades, as well as played around the world. Communities too students will be volunteering to support the Third Annual Bike Oshkosh 2018 on May 5. Students have been learning about the impact of using bikes and the impact this has on the Oshkosh economy and the environment. Students at Oshkosh North and Oshkosh West were able to participate in the Spring Interview-a-thon with 14 organizations, doing 171 interviews over two days. This event is hosted by the Oshkosh Chamber of Commerce and is typically held in the spring and fall to provide students with an opportunity to obtain a volunteer or paid position and gain interview experience and feedback that will prepare them for the future interviews and career opportunities. Roosevelt Elementary School students and staff attended a bike stunt showcase as a PBIS celebration, where the messages included bike safety, anti-bullying, and working hard to accomplish your dreams. Thanks to the generosity of the Roosevelt PTO, students at Roosevelt Elementary School were able to celebrate literacy and World Book Day by being provided with the opportunity to pick a book that they could take home to keep. South Park Middle School students displayed their artwork and tech projects on April 12 during their Fine Arts Night. Families also enjoyed music, rock painting, making magnetic plexiglass, raffles, and a talent showcase. The night was a complete success. And here is the Superintendent's Calendar since the previous board meeting for Stan Mack.
Thank you very much, Dr. Gunlock.
You're welcome.
Are there any district administrator supplemental reports this evening?
There are not.
Okay. Is there a Listening Session Report from April 11?
There is. We had one individual attend the Listening Session, and this individual continued to express concerns and wanted to keep the busing issue promoted by the Esther Group at the forefront. We shared some information, and we also shared the fact that we had been working at the suggestion of Bob Peschel. We had some maps generated that showed where all our students were in relationship to the Oshkosh transit routes. And the summary of all of that is, the vast majority of our students are within about a half-mile of an Oshkosh transit route. So, we're continuing to look at that as both a school district and as a city, so.
All right. Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Are there any other committee reports, Education Committee?
Yes, I have one. The Energy Committee met on April 23. We had a public forum. Former co-chair, the Energy Committee is set up usually with a board member and a community member co-chairing that group, and Samara Hamzey, I hope I'm saying her last name correct, was the past co-chair, and she just came back to kind of update us on what she's doing. She has taken a position as the Green and Healthy Schools Coordinator out of Madison, and she just wanted to let us know that she will be willing to help us out with her new job any way that we should can. Energy Club Updates, Oshkosh West High School has an Energy Club, and what they did for Green Week at Oshkosh West High School is they collected old desktop computers from staff, and then computer coroner staff came in and helped them take apart the computers and recycle the metal, and the proceeds is going to the Oshkosh West High School Football Team, who has the Junk for Jerseys fundraiser they do. Deep Focus on our Energy Program, Jefferson has that wonderful award-winning custodian, has not been involved with any recent projects, and no work is scheduled, making Jefferson eligible to apply for a Deep Focus on Energy Program. May 15 is the deadline for this, and Bill Playman will work with the district on applying to the program. We had a Facilities Update, where Trager is going to have some fans removed and some infrastructure piping that will be done to allow for proper air distribution. Oshkosh West High School is having an air handler in the band and choir areas will be removed. Air handler in the O Room is also being replaced that is not properly pulling in air from the outside, and they're going to also have some glass, large glass patch going on. And Webster Middle School is having three air handlers from when the building was built, back in the '60s, I believe, replaced in the auditorium, cafeteria, and gymnasium. And then, we had quite a long discussion on reeducating energy conservation in buildings, mainly focused around personal items that people bring in, like coffee makers and small refrigerators and stuff, and how people think, well, it's just my coffee maker, it's not going to be that big a deal, but when you multiply it out across the district, it can get quite costly with energy costs. So, what we are going to do is we're going to have the Energy Club do an audit at Oshkosh West High School, and they're just going to see how many of those devices and appliances are being used, and then they're going to estimate the cost that it's costing. If people can see that on paper, how it's costing just West High School, it might reinforce the idea of having more conservation in that area. We're also going to review the policy that we have on that to see if we can, if we need to stiffen that or enforce it more strictly. That would be coming to a Policy and Governance Committee meeting up in the next couple of months. Our next meeting is scheduled for September 24 at 8:30 a.m., and that is my report.
Thank you, Mr. Evans. The next item on the agenda is non-agenda-related public forums. Is there anyone who would like to address the board on any non-related agenda item Moving on, then, is there anyone who would like to address the board on any agenda-related item as part of the public forum? Seeing none, we'll move on to the Consent Resolution Agenda. For the Consent Agenda, the board has been furnished with background material on each item or has discussed at a previous meeting. This will be acted upon with one vote without discussion. If a board member wants to discuss any item, it will be pulled out of the Consent Agenda and will be voted on separately. Is there anyone who wanted to pull anything from the Consent Resolution tonight? I would like to pull number three, number eight, and number 12. I would like to pull number three, number eight, and number 12, please. So for the consent resolution, the board will consider the approval of number one, minutes of the March 21, 2018 regular board meeting, two, minutes of the April 4, 2018 special board meeting, number four, minutes of the April 4, excuse me, April 11, 2018 regular board meeting, number five, minutes of the April 11, 2018 executive session at regular board meeting, number six, bills payable, number seven, personnel, A, appointments, resignations, and salary schedule, number nine, summer school staffing, number 10, 2018 extended school year and special education co-taught staffing, number 11, board meeting dates for 2018, 2019. This is a long list.
Yes, it is.
Number 13, District Compliance Officer Policy Updates. A, Policy 1422, nondiscrimination and equal opportunity, excuse me, equal employment opportunity. B, 1623, Section 504/ADA prohibition against disability discrimination in employment. C, 2260, nondiscrimination and access to equal educational opportunity. D, 2260.01, Section 504/ADA prohibition against discrimination based on disability. E, 3122, nondiscrimination and equal employment opportunity. F, 3123, Section 504 ADA prohibition against disability discrimination in employment. G, 4122, nondiscrimination and equal employment opportunities. H, 4123, Section 504 ADA prohibition against disability discrimination in employment. I, 5517, student anti-harassment. Number 14, Neola Policy Updates. A, 0155, Committees. B, 1210, Board Superintendent Relationship. C, 2510, Adoption of Textbooks. D, 20, excuse me, 7430, Safety Standards. E, 9130, Public Requests, Suggestions, or Complaints. F, 9211, District Support Organizations. G, 0142.7, Orientation. H, 0151.2, Required Student Academic Standards Agenda Item. I, 0152, Officers. J, 2260.02, English Language Proficiency. K, 2271, Early College Credit Program. L, 2411, School Counseling and Academic Career, and Academic Career Planning. M, 3160, Physical Examination for Professional Staff. N, 4160, Physical Examination Support Staff. O, 3217 Weapons Professional Staff. P, 4217 Weapons Support Staff. Q, 5772 Weapons Students. R, 5113.01, Part-Time Open Enrollment. S, 5330, Administration of Medication and Emergency Care. T, 5460.01, Diploma Deferral. Number 15, Health Advisory Committee Policy Updates. A, 5320, Immunization. B, 8450, Control of Casual Contact Communicable Diseases.
So moved.
Thank you.
Okay.
Is there any discussion? Oh, no.
Not yet.
Not on those. Could you please call the roll?
Carolyn?
Aye.
Carolyn, aye. Eliason?
Aye.
Eliason, aye. Evans?
Aye.
Evans, aye. Garner?
Aye.
Garner, aye. Herzog?
Aye.
Herzog, aye. Olsted?
Aye.
Olsted, aye. Peschel?
Aye.
Peschel, aye. Motion carried.
Okay. Resolution number three, minutes of the April 4, 2018 executive session at special board meeting.
So moved.
Second. Okay. I, that's good.
I wasn't present, so.
Oh. Is there someone else who would like to second that?
I seconded.
She seconded.
I think you saw approved.
Pardon me?
I think you saw approved.
Well, we need to amend it. We need to amend.
Oh, there's a mistake on the.
There's a mistake in the minutes.
Okay. Okay. So, find it. Sorry. Okay. The part that I wanted to take a look at was on page four. It was under request for future agenda items. I had suggested that John Ashley from the Wisconsin Association of School Boards was willing to come and lead a workshop on a variety of things, including the key work of school boards, and Ted Nitske, the administrator at CISA VI, was also willing to come. So I'd like to add Ted Nitske to that agenda item that we bring in either/or or both. I don't think it's, it has to be one or the other, but we could bring in both and they could look at different things for us. We also talked about doing some work with the document called Key Work of School Boards, which has a variety of topics, and those topics were the ones on which we based our self-evaluation so that we could do that as an ongoing professional growth opportunity for us. So what I'm suggesting in terms of this is that we, that we maybe add a bullet point under invite John Ashley to also invite Ted Nitske.
Did you pull number two?
Yes.
You meant number two.
Those are at the executive session.
Oh, I'm sorry. Then I pulled the wrong one, so we're done.
But three needed to be pulled anyway.
All right, so let's go to three then. Sorry about that. I pulled the wrong one. I'm sorry. I'm a little new to this. Okay, so.
I think we have already approved talking about number three.
We did. So we have to move on to.
Well, we need to talk about that.
Yes, the executive session.
Yeah, we're in discussion on number three.
So in discussion, number three, you want to take your name as present, move it to absent.
Well, no, actually, yes. Well, it says seven, zero upon roll call in number three, or it should only read six, zero upon roll call.
Well, I'm glad we pulled that one, though.
So I would make an amendment to the minutes to change the seven to six. Make a motion to amend.
And then don't we have to change the, or is that for a different meeting?
That was.
It's for April 11, sorry. This is for April 4, got it.
Yep. And the April 4, number two was correct in regards to who was in attendance.
Okay.
Yep.
Okay. Second. Is there any further discussion? Okay, would you please call the roll on the amendment?
Eliason?
Aye.
Eliason, aye. Evans?
Aye.
Evans, aye. Garner?
Aye.
Garner, aye. Herzog?
Aye.
Herzog, aye. Olsted?
Aye.
Olsted, aye. Peschel?
Aye.
Peschel, aye. Carolyn?
Aye.
Carolyn, aye. Amendment carried.
Okay. Very good. And then the number eight, roll call.
We'll hold on the amended.
Oh. Right. Is there any discussion? Any further discussion? Please call the roll.
Evans?
Aye.
Evans, aye. Garner?
Aye.
Garner, aye. Herzog?
Aye.
Herzog, aye. Olsted?
Aye.
Olsted, aye. Peschel?
Aye.
Peschel, aye. Carolyn?
Aye.
Carolyn, aye. Eliason?
Aye.
Eliason, aye. Motion carried.
Resolution number eight, 2018-19 Instructional Material Fee Schedule.
So moved.
Second.
Thank you. I had asked to pull this one in the interest of transparency and openness. This is one that affects all of our students and their families, and I just wanted to give administration time for a two-to-three-minute executive, or two-to-three-sentence executive summary on any major changes in the instructional material fee schedule for the upcoming school year.
I think I can handle that one.
Very good.
There's, there's four specific changes that were requested by the administration. All of them impact the high school fee structure. There's been no changes for the elementary structure or the middle school structure. So the changes are, I'll take them kind of in order. Increasing the music rental fee to, it currently is a max of $50 to a max of 75. The rationale for that is that the current fee does not cover the cost of repair and reconditioning, and the fee that we currently have in place is still far, far less than people have to pay if they go to a, to a music agency to rent that. So this is more of a cost recovery issue for the high school.
The instruments.
The instruments, yes. Yeah. The second one is the addition of a $5 strength and conditioning fee. What that is for is for a order of individual logbooks for the students to begin tracking their workouts. So that is, that is a new fee for the high school. The third one is increasing the refundable lock deposit from $5 to $10. This refundable deposit is just, just covers the cost of purchasing a new lock in the event somebody does not return their lock. And lastly, the increase in driver ed lab fees for the 18-19 school year from $315 to $325. The new vehicle lease costs came in and they have increased, as you would expect, and the current fees need to go up slightly to adjust to cover the change. And as you know, our driver's ed program is, is budgeted so that it breaks even, so it does not cost us anything nor does it generate revenue, so.
Thank you, Dr. Gunlock.
Those are the four.
I appreciate that. Is there any further discussion on number eight? Please call the roll.
Garner?
Aye.
Garner, aye. Herzog?
Aye.
Herzog, aye. Olsted?
Aye.
Olsted, aye. Peschel?
Aye.
Peschel, aye. Carolyn?
Aye.
Carolyn, aye. Eliason?
Aye.
Eliason, aye. Evans?
Aye.
Evans, aye. Motion carried.
Thank you. Resolution 12, vendor for new telephone system.
So moved.
Second. I had asked to pull this one because this is a significant change and a significant dollar amount, and again, in the interest of openness and transparency, I thought it would be good for the public to know what we're voting on in terms of the new telephone system. And I know we have Mr. Summers here this evening as well as Dr. Gunlock, so if one of you would like to again give a two-to-three-sentence summary, that would be great.
Paper, scissors, rock, or are we just? I can probably give an, give an, a quick overview, and Bob, you may want to talk a little bit about the, part of the rationale of the system we selected. The phone system that we put in place was put in about seven years ago. If you remember, prior to that time, we had six different phone systems kind of put together. The new system put phones everywhere, which is, which was a real pro in terms of safety. It also had the advantage of saving us about $150,000 a year out of our budget because we hooked it together and we leveraged our, our technology infrastructure. This is a replacement of that system, and we've, we've, we are recommending that we go with Converged, which is the name of the firm. The phone system is a ShoreTel phone system, and the cost over seven years is about $604,000. That's, that's spread over a seven-year period. And this was, this system was picked for a variety of reasons. Bob, do you want to just come up and maybe share just a couple of those, a couple of the things that were, that stood out with the ShoreTel system over our current one?
One of the major things we looked at was ease of use for the person that's setting up the phone systems. So right now, instead of having one guy kind of dedicated to it, and he's really, there's not really a backup that can do that. He tried showing me once and it didn't, it didn't go well. So this will allow an easier setup for phones, and we have quite a few changes every year. It also has a better notification system, so instead of just going to the phones, it will go to their email, it will go to their cell phones, so that people that are out and about in the buildings will know that there's an issue that goes on in the buildings. It will also email our staff and let them know that they have a voicemail. So it should be a lot more efficient. We've seen all the interfaces. We've talked to all the vendors, we've talked to a bunch of their references, so.
So what, in, in setup time, our current, our current system to add a new account would take how many minutes?
Ten minutes.
And this one, this new one?
Less than a minute.
Less than a minute. So that there, there's a pretty significant time savings there, so that's one of what was one of the key factors. And of course, it does all the things our current will do, so.
All right. Any, any other questions or comments on the new phone system?
I have one. So, so, and it actually relates to cost. So we, so we didn't take the, the most affordable bid. And, and why is it, what's, what's the difference between?
Great question.
HBS and Converged?
In the last two years of the pricing model, there is no hardware warranty or support. So if anything would, would die in those last two years, any pieces of hardware, they would not be covered. They didn't offer a warranty after five years.
And we had asked.
And we had asked, yes.
We'd asked, okay, what would the cost of that be? They couldn't, they simply couldn't provide it.
Okay.
Any other questions or comments, discussion?
I have one more.
Okay.
So now, so I asked about the most affordable. Why is Converged ones so much higher than everyone else's?
We looked at, one of the vendors that came in told us they'd save us a lot of money by doing totally outside. So basically, you just buy the device. They take care of all of the equipment outside. It is totally, it's a total IP phone, so it totally exists out in the cloud, and that cost just kept going up.
Okay.
They didn't save us thousands of dollars.
I have the same question. So I asked someone else very close to me to read all this and convert it to my language, and that person gave me their, you know, like he looked at the RFP and gave me theirs, and they were more on that higher because it is all service where we don't particularly need that. When you get into certain companies, it's all service and they take care of all of it. They don't piece it out or let you have in-house things. So that's all, yeah. There's a difference between those bigger, those other ones. From my understanding, if I'm correct, that's kind of what I got at.
Yeah, it's totally handled up there.
Okay.
So essentially, what, what we're getting here is we're getting a phone system that's more user-friendly to the people that are using it.
Yes.
And it's going to essentially create that much more efficiencies within our, our communication networks.
Well, and where this actually impacts is sometimes we'll have, we have a lot of staff changes that occur at the beginning of the year. Those phone systems changes take a while to work their way through to given, given the time. This will allow us to be a lot more nimble on our feet with, in terms of, of phone changes and getting people's accounts live-activated, almost automated. So once an employee's been hired, we put them in the system, the phone count's going to get provisioned within a minute, and we're off to the races from there, so.
Okay.
Any other comments, discussion?
One other piece I would point out that this, the, the cost of running this system is no more, I mean, it might be slightly less than our existing system that we budgeted. So it's not like we're having to budget extra dollars. These are dollars we are already budgeting for a current phone system. That cost will just continue going forward.
So this is just for the, this isn't dial tone? This is just for the, the phones themselves and putting this in, in the system?
Yes, yeah.
Yeah, okay.
Anyone else? Thank you, Mr. Summers, Dr. Gunlock. So Resolution 12 reads, be it resolved that the Oshkosh Area School District Board of Education approves the selection of Converged ShoreTel as the vendor for IT project number 1071 phone system replacement as filed with the Secretary to the Board of Education. So moved.
Second.
Please call the roll.
Herzog?
Aye.
Herzog, aye. Olsted?
Aye.
Olsted, aye. Peschel?
Aye.
Peschel, aye. Carolyn?
Aye.
Carolyn, aye. Eliason?
Aye.
Eliason, aye. Evans?
Aye.
Evans, aye. Garner?
Aye.
Garner, aye. Motion carried.
Thank you. Are there any individual considered resolutions tonight? Are there requests for future agenda items tonight?
Could you, is, would it be appropriate to go into this one for what you were talking about, for that other gentleman that you wanted to come in?
Sure.
Does that fall under this?